Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for joining us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hallenbaugh.
Here.
Odericio.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Robando.
Here.
Okay, the minutes from our September 5th meeting were distributed prior to this evening for your Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? During none, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Did all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Correspondence? Do we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, one item. The financial budget summary report for the month of August 2023 was received and to council prior to this evening's meeting and is noted for the record.
Okay. This is a rhetorical question. Do we have any lobby visitations this evening?
We do. Philip Wooler.
When you, uh, when you come up to the microphone, if you could state your address for the record, please?
My address is 318 North Church Street, just north of the mega parking lot that's going up. And still growing. Okay. I had been talking to Mary Margaret, the CEO of Mossar, who was overseeing everything. And I asked her about, when I was looking at those chillers over there, I guess is what they are, that in the fencing around it. I says, what is the fencing going to look like that's going next to my property? Meaning, uh, there was no fencing up yet, except the construction fence. But anyway, she says, oh, it'll be just like that. It'll go all the way down. I says, oh, good, good. Okay. Then the fencing goes up. And I talked to Nick. Nick was over to my house a couple of times. Made me about this gap that developed between my original back fence and the new fence that had been put up. It was like a foot and a half gap. I couldn't have that. And they, uh, Public Works took care of it real nicely. And I asked Nick about, uh, what was the original plan? And he says, oh, the original plan was to just make it six foot all the way down. And apparently zoning didn't like that. And so they says poo poo on that. And, uh, I think the city should be a good neighbor and make it six foot all the way down. Because it just doesn't look right. And then the usual things, why they say, oh, it's gotta be four foot. It's not between two houses. It's not between a house and a building. And you can look at the post office fence. It goes all the way down beyond the front porch. And that's just a single lane drive. Here, we got a mega parking lot. So I think the city should be a good neighbor and get a variance and change it to six foot all the way down. And that's my position on that matter.
Thank you very much.
Mary Hinkleman.
Good evening, everybody. Mary Hinkleman with the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce. Address 217 South Church Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Visit BG Ohio. We have completed the new calendar platform. It is live on our website. And we're gonna do a launch party so that everybody knows the, um, capabilities of this new platform. And it is set for October the 10th. And I'd like you all to save the date. We will open registration before the end of the week and put a press release out. So we hope you all can make it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's everyone.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, I have one resolution and two ordinances. First, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. An ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. And an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and to seek qualifications, advertise for bids, and to enter into contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services related to the construction of a pedestrian hybrid beacon at the intersection of West Wooster Street and Maple Street.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
Uh, from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I have two ordinances. The first, um, ordinance establishes interim zoning of the IE Innovation and Employment zoning for the approximately 1.52 acres of land located on South Dunbridge Road and recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Vicky L. Frobos petitioner. And the second is the annexation ordinance, um, an ordinance accepting the annexation of approximately 1.52 acres of land in Centertownship, Wood County, Ohio, from Vicky L. Frobos petitioner.
Mr. President.
Mr. Odericio.
I have a resolution from the Community Improvement Committee. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Community Development Block Grant, CD BG Housing Policy and Procedures Manual.
That brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. For my report this evening, I've asked, um, representatives of the Bowling Green State University Center for Regional Development to come this evening and share some information that was developed during the downtown forward process. As you'll remember, um, earlier this year, we put together a partnership with BGSU and the Center for Regional Development to, um, really develop feedback to help us understand, uh, opportunities for potential investment in our downtown area. The premise going into this, uh, process was that, um, we recognize that our downtown area really is one of our most significant community assets. And it's important for us to continuously be mindful of how we can, uh, make it better. So, um, we're very thankful for, uh, the partnership that took place. And I should also, at this point, recognize those community members that served on a steering committee, that worked together with the representatives from CRD to help facilitate input and come up with some observations and some, uh, opportunities, I think, that are very exciting. So, um, I would like to repor- or to recognize those, uh, members of, uh, CRD that are here this evening. We have Nicole Pfeiffer, who is the Director of CRD with us this evening. Uh, we have Melissa Hopfer, um, sitting next to me, who is going to, um, guide us through the presentation. And we also have John Luke Joseph Martin, um, one of the student representatives, graduate student representatives, uh, that was, uh, deeply involved in the project. So, thank you all for your, for your very good work. Thank you for your effort. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa and ask her to share, um, this presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, Council. I'm excited to be with you, with you here today to, I'm gonna give a brief overview of, uh, the Downtown Forward planning process, kinda how the project came to be. Uh, and then I'll just give you a very quick summary of, uh, the Pedestrian Experience Plan, which is, uh, which is the product of the planning process that we went through, uh, over the last 14 months. So, uh, the, sort of the program that kind of created this opportunity for CRD and the City of Bowling Green to work together, uh, is the Reimagining Rural Regions Program. It's a program that, uh, CRD has administered for two years. And it basically allows rural communities to undergo a creative placemaking process. Uh, so it, I guess, kinda the motivation around that is that rural communities are facing challenges with, uh, workforce, uh, talent attraction and retention, jobs, things like that. So the R3 program, uh, provides an opportunity for rural communities to capitalize on their assets and essentially create some other amenities in a community that can attract folks to li- to live and work here. So the CRD team, uh, the mayor already kind of said who we were. It was myself, um, and I'm a project manager with CRD. I had two graduate assistants, one, one who is here today, uh, John Luke and Marcus as well. And then we also had PACE Fellows, which stands for, uh, Placemaking and Community Engagement Fellows. And that was Austin and Bryce, who are undergraduate students, who helped us with some of the research. So Downtown Forward, uh, basically, Downtown Forward is the iteration of R3 in Bowling Green. So it was a 14-month planning process, uh, led by a 16-member steering committee, which will show here in a second who was part of that committee, a lot of community leaders. We were proud to have a BG High School student, as well as a BGSU student, on our steering committee to provide that, uh, the voice of the younger folks in the community. Um, and so Downtown Forward is inspired by Heritage 2025. Again, just kind of adds a creative placemaking component to the Heritage 2025 initiative. So, oh, that's really small. That's the steering committee. Uh, I don't, I don't know that I, I don't have a lot of time, so I don't know that I can list everybody off. But, um, we had a core team, as well as the, the steering committee. If you look at the plan online, uh, it should be available online. You can kinda see everybody who was a part of that process. Again, a lot of community leaders, uh, folks from the City of Bowling Green, um, et cetera. So this is just, oh, goodness. So this is just a, a graphic that kinda shows the timeline of the planning process. It started, uh, last August. And so, uh, in August and September of last year was the formulation of the steering committee and, um, some sort of beginning, uh, conversations about what do we wanna see for downtown Bowling Green? Uh, and then we, in October, we held a community feedback session, we held two, where we tried to get some high-level thoughts on what citizens and residents wanted to see in downtown Bowling Green, what they liked, what they didn't like, some initial sort of, uh, impressions of that. Uh, and then we did focus groups, a community survey. And then from there, the steering committee made some project decisions. So just to talk briefly about some of the, the, the community engagement that we did. Uh, we did the, the community feedback session, and that was just to get, again, that, some of that initial, uh, information on what are topics of interest in the community. And so some of the things that came up were accessibility, aesthetics and physical appearance, connection to BGSU, downtown living and residential properties, events, entertainment and festivals, and then restaurants, retail, and services. So those were kinda the high-level things that folks were interested in. And as we went through our community engagement activities, um, they kind of zero in and get more specific as we go on. We also held a series of focus groups, uh, to, again, get more specific information and feedback from, uh, specific, uh, audiences that we wanted to ensure that we heard from. We also, uh, put out a community-wide survey, uh, in March of this year. We received, uh, 1,092 responses, which we were pretty pleased about. Uh, the commu- the survey asked a number of questions, um, interest in different kinds of projects. Um, we asked folks to, like, these two specific charts here, I, I apologize, this is hard to see, is, uh, you know, what is your status, um, in terms of, are you a resident of Bowling Green? Do you work in Bowling Green but live elsewhere? Are you a student? So trying to figure out, you know, what folks, what their relationship with Bowling Green is. Uh, and then the bottom graph was, on a scale from 1 to 10, how do you rate the attractiveness of the downtown Bowling Green area? So, um, the, the survey included a number of questions around those types of things. So from the survey, the focus groups and all of that, the, the steering committee took that data, analyzed it, and what we came up with was, was basically three different areas that folks were excited and wanted to know more about in terms of implementing projects. And those ended up being alley beautification, public art, and signage and wayfinding. So what we did from there is we, uh, we researched a couple of case studies in each of those areas and tried to provide some information that Bowling Green stakeholders could use, or the city, or who, you know, whoever is interested in these projects. It's information to kinda help move the, the needle on some of these things. And I do wanna say that overall, uh, I would say residents are very happy with downtown Bowling Green. It's, it's great. And, and the projects that we, uh, researched and selected are definitely enhancements. And we tried to focus on the pedestrian experience, because we were hearing about things like parking and things like that. Uh, so we were thinking, well, if it's a better pedestrian experience, um, you know, maybe people, essentially would just enjoy walking around more. It'd be easier to get to places on foot. Um, so that's kinda the angle that we took with the, with the Pedestrian Experience Plan. So the plan, again, like I said, it outlines information on alley beautification, public art, and signage and wayfinding. So I'll just brief- briefly go through all three of these, um, and just kinda give you a quick snapshot of, of what's in the plan. So with alley beautification, one of the things that we were excited, that we were able to do, is an alley inventory of downtown Bowling Green. So this maps out the alleys in the downtown area, where they are. It identifies them, if they have a name. And then it, it describes each alley and the condition of each alley, and then whether it's publicly or privately owned. Um, because there's a lot of implications if an alley is privately owned versus public, public and vice versa. So the alley inventory is, again, meant to provide some information for folks to start with if they wanna do some alley improvements in the downtown area. And then some of the case studies that we looked at for alley beautification, uh, we looked at city thread. We looked at two in Chattanooga, Tennessee. One was called City Thread. Uh, the other one is Passageways 2.0, which are similar project, projects. But, um, the case studies are, are included in the plan, so I don't wanna go into too much detail here today. But, uh, so we looked at two in Chattanooga, which, um, were def- were definitely around, um, interactive, like multi-use art, essentially, and seating and things like that, that really activated the alleys in Chattanooga. And then, um, alley, the Alley Arches in Defiance, Ohio, was a neat project and certainly a peer community that's nearby, um, that basically names and gives their alleys an ident- an identity through their Alley Arches project. The next, uh, topic we looked at was public art. And so some of the case studies we looked at for there, um, was a mural gallery in Gehanna, Ohio. They took an abandoned car wash and transformed it into an art gallery with rotating installations of art. Um, and then we also looked at a, an art competition, uh, in Zeneo, Ohio. Uh, and then, so the juvenile courts, um, essentially had their, uh, the, the, the youth that they were involved with doing some public art, and they had an outlet to be creative and, and, and things like that. So, um, but they had different youth groups and things coming through, um, to essentially supply art and, and do sort of a competitive thing at the library to get people engaged. And then finally, the other thing that we looked at was signage and wayfinding. I think this is probably a little bit self-explanatory, so we looked at some two, we looked at two local-ish, uh, case studies for this. Um, so we looked at Sandusky, Ohio. They did, they worked with a guide studio, um, to create new signage and branding. So they really focused on branding, um, in their community to, to essentially kinda create that identity and, and kind of focus on that. And then Kent, Ohio, was an interesting case study to look at, because much, like, similar to Bowling Green, they're a college town. Uh, and so they basically took their quirkiness and tried to, um, incorporate that, incorporate some personality into their signage and wayfinding. And, um, a lot of things that we saw, too, were things like using, you know, the time. So, so communicating distance and time instead of miles, I guess that's like a Midwest thing to do. So again, kind of being culturally, regionally relevant in, in signage and wayfinding is, is something that we saw as well. We saw, that we saw often. So the case studies were done, um, through just internet research, but also one-on-one interviews were done with the project managers for each of those. So we got some really good sort of firsthand knowledge and, uh, information for folks in Bowling Green to use if they wanna implement any of these kinds of projects. So in conclusion, uh, like I, like I had mentioned, um, I think everyone's really happy. You know, most people are very happy with downtown Bowling Green. It has a lot to offer. Uh, this is, the, the Pedestrian Experience Plan is just meant to provide inspiration and, uh, information that can make it easier to, uh, implement essentially pedestrian experience enhancements in the downtown. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I tried to be quick.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Melissa, thank you very much. And once again, I wanna extend my appreciation to all the members of the team. Couple of points that I wanted to make. Things are important to me to say at this point in this process. You know, it's my belief that this is just the beginning. I think that this plan does create some actionable items. And I hope that we'll, um, that we'll do just that, that we'll take some action on some of these things. Some of the, the, you know, some of the concepts that, that were discussed and identified as opportunities have been discussed, um, before. And I know that there are, um, people working on those, some of those things actively. I just wanna encourage, um, those that are working on those things to continue to work. And we need to, I think, um, have some conversations, the administration and, and, uh, council and some of these community partners that are involved in these discussions to figure out how we can make certain that, um, this is going to, uh, be a dynamic plan that will result in some tangible results. That's important to me. I don't want it to go on a shelf and just gather dust. Uh, there's too much opportunity and it's too important for us to, to continue to work on these things. And then, you know, also, I would say that, um, you know, as Melissa mentioned, this was really, I think, in my view anyways, um, step one in the Heritage 2025 concept that we had discussed, um, two years ago now, almost already. And, um, I think that we just scratched the surface here, although the, the work product is good. And again, there are actionable items here. Um, I think there are, are other opportunities that we need to. And I will tell you, I'm committed to doing this, and I intend to continue to work with, uh, investors, property owners, business owners in the downtown area, members of the administration and council, to figure out how we can continue, um, these conversations to make sure that we're doing all that we can to leverage this great asset right here in the middle of our community. So Melissa, thank you all very much. Concludes my report. Subject to any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for the mayor this evening? Thank you very much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening, Council. Couple reminders for you. We have the zoning training with Zone Co. scheduled for this Thursday at 6:00 PM here in the council chamber. Nolan will be here, and we also have invited the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals to join with you at that session that evening. And on Friday is the Party for the Parks, which is sponsored by the Bowling Green Parks and Recreation Foundation. Uh, that group raises money that are, that, for, um, activities and events that are used in our parks. And we would encourage, uh, folks to attend and support our parks. And lastly, we hope that you've seen the news out there that the City of Bowling Green is offering discounted trees to homeowners, uh, through the Community Canopy Program. So this program is, uh, offered by the Arbor Day Foundation, and it helps organizations distribute discounted trees with the knowledge and tools of where best to plant them. So Bowling Green is proud to sponsor this program and will cover half the cost of up to four trees per property. Residents pay a reduced rate of $50 per tree, and then they receive help in the most strategic places to plant those trees on their properties. So the trees are available on a first-come, first-served basis. And by visiting our website, they will be able to get more information on that program. But we are excited to be a, a partner in offering that to the community. That completes my report this evening. Subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tretter this evening? Thank you very much. Acting City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Baby and Dad and Mom are doing real good, and Hunter, Hunter will be back to work a week from today.
Okay. That sounds like a good report. Any questions for Mr. Marsh? Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O'Connell.
No report unless you have questions.
Uh, I do have one question, just because people keep asking me.
Sure.
Uh, when do we expect that West Wooster Street will be done, done?
So paving is, uh, supposed to occur this week, uh, maybe going the next week. And then striping follow after that. It did mill, mill off the, the asphalt that was gonna get removed, as planned. Um, so paving is, uh, right around the corner, uh, so to speak. But it's, it's very soon. You're, you're, you're at the, almost at the end of the tunnel.
All right, so like two weeks-ish?
Yeah, that's, that's a good, good, uh, but, striping may come after that, but, um, yeah.
Okay. Because Jack Hammer has been standing out there for a long time, and, uh, in front of Larry Nader's house. It'd be nice if he could go inside.
We thought, we thought they could use that for the ribbon cutting. It's opened.
That'd be a great idea. Uh, any other questions for Mr. O'Connell? Okay, thank you very much. Brings us to council committee reports. Um, council did have our annual, um, strategic planning goal-setting, uh, meeting last Monday. Um, at 6 o'clock. It lasted about two hours. The results of which have been published, uh, so I won't go into too much detail. But if anyone would like to bring up anything specific, uh, from that meeting or its outcome. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I, I don't know if this fits here, so please shut me off if it doesn't. But I've gotten some, uh, some initial feedback, uh, from some property management individuals with respect to the, uh, rental, uh, self-inspection forms. And, um, the feedback that I've gotten is that the, it's a, a lot of work for them to do. Perhaps was not what they were necessarily expecting. So, I mean, I'm not passing any judgment. I'm just trying to figure out if there would be some way to, uh, take that in consideration, uh, maybe have some sort of, uh, meeting with, uh, property management individuals to see if there's some way that the process, which we are committed to, can somehow be smoothed a little bit. Maybe there's one or two of the items that, uh, um, a slight change would, would allow it to be more easily done. In other words, I'm not sure of the path forward. I just think that, uh, it would be something that perhaps we should, uh, look into or, or get some sort of community conversation to, to see if we can implement this, um, as painlessly but as quickly as possible.
Well, I mean, I'm not ready to lay out some action. Well, I mean, I'm not ready to lay out some action steps right here tonight, but I too have heard, I have heard conversations about that, and I, not, not just from members of the community, but also from other members of council. So this is something that I would assume that we will be looking into.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I could, I can comment to that. Bill, I can tell you, we, we've heard the same concerns. I've had a number of conversations over the course of the last week or so, and we are open to reassessing the forms and the timelines involved in those things. I'm actually meeting with two property owners tomorrow to gather feedback directly from them. So yeah, we're aware, we're engaged. My, my goal is to facilitate some feedback, fall back, talk to members of the administrative team that were responsible for developing the, the forms in good faith, and we'll, we'll report to council, hopefully very soon, like hopefully by the next meeting, on what we've heard and what are, some of our goals will be moving forward. Because I think that your state of goals and ours align. We do want to, we want to make it a process that is not overly burdensome to the property owners, but it's important that we gather, you know, a baseline of information, and that's what we're trying to do.
I appreciate that. If there's any way that I can, can help be an added voice, please let me know. And I really do appreciate your responsiveness to that.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Any other council committee reports or related items?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Just a reminder that the finance committee will meet at 6:15 PM on October 16th, our second meeting in October, to receive our third quarter update. Just want to give everybody a heads up.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to the reading of legislation. Jody?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3855 for first reading. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution number 3856 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended community development block grant, CDBG, Housing Policy and Procedures Manual. Ordinance number 9125 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023 and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9125 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for ordinance 9125.
Ordinance number 9125 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023 and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9125.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9125 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9126 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and to seek qualifications, advertise for bids, and to enter into contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services related to the construction of a pedestrian hybrid beacon at the intersection of West Wooster Street and Maple Street. Ordinance number 9127 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 1.52 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio, from Vicky L. Frobo's petitioner. Ordinance number 9128 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of IE innovation and employment zoning for the approximately 1.52 acres of land located on South Dunbridge Road and recently annexed to the city as petitioned by Vicky L. Frobo's petitioner. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3853 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the city of Bowling Green to participate in the federal land and water conservation fund program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval. Resolution number 3854. Resolution in support of the Bowling Green school system and specifically the public high school levy on the November 7th ballot.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I apologize to council, but we do need to make a slight change to the title of this resolution, not the body, but the title. So I would like to move to amend resolution 3854 by substitution by only changing the portion of the title where the wording is levy and changing that to bond issue.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Again, this does not change anything with the intent. It's just bringing it in more, more accurately specifying it as a bond issue instead of a levy.
Yep. Jody?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 3852 is adopted.
Ordinance number 1, 9120 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing a temporary reduction and/or moratorium of certain residential building permit fees.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9120.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9120 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9121 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections 95A.03C11, 95A.09D1, and 95A.10C4 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding income tax regulations effective December 31, 2023.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9121.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Odericio? Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9122 is adopted.
Paper court. Sorry. Ordinance number 9123 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.01G Payban III of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9122.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Odericio? Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 3852 is adopted.
Ordinance number 1, 9120 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing a temporary reduction and/or moratorium of certain residential building permit fees.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9120.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody?
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 9120 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9121 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections 95A.03C11, 95A.09D1, and 95A.10C4 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding income tax regulations effective December 31, 2023.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9121.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Odericio? Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9121 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9122 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.01G Payban III of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9122.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9122 is adopted.
Paper court. Sorry. Ordinance number 9123 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 152.25A1 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding fire damage reduction.
Mr. President?
Ms. Phipps?
I move to adopt ordinance 9123.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jody?
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
So the standard, then, is practical difficulties to the property owner. And 150.107 does a good job of laying out specific criteria that the board must consider. So I'm not sure why we would want to change this standard when we are considering a variance to just occupancy requirements. My third point is that new 150.85G seems to allow structural alterations to be made to any non-conforming property without any Board of Zoning Appeals involvement. Instead, it says that only a city permit is needed. I'm not sure how that provision would work or why we wouldn't want BZA involvement here. New 150.85I would allow a non-conforming use to be changed, to, quote, "another non-conforming use of a more restrictive classification." This is different from the current code at 150.87B, which states, quote, "A non-conforming use of the building may be changed to another non-conforming use of an equal or more appropriate use for the zone or district in which it is located," end quote. So under our current code, those determinations are made by the planning director and may be referred to the ZBA. So the standard is a bit different, "different," excuse me, and that process is not spelled out in the proposed version, and I think it should be. This legislation also changes 150.87 by throwing out all the language in the version we just passed in favor of one paragraph, where we just decided to insist that a legal non-conforming use end if the owner discontinues the non-conforming use for six months. Under the changes this legislation makes, the owner would need to voluntarily discontinue that use much longer, for a period of two years, before the city could disallow the non-conforming use. And that's any legal non-conforming use, not just occupancy. I'm not sure why this change is being proposed. Finally, I have a general concern about what the proposed ordinance declares to be a nuisance. While I believe the intent is only to reach legal non-conforming occupancy uses, language in this four-page piece of legislation also seems to declare other legal non-conforming uses to be nuisances as well. And in 2051, 28 years from now, I want the city to clearly understand just what nuisance is we are requiring them to abate. So I could go on, but I'll stop. I don't think this ordinance can be fixed tonight. And again, I think the problem of legal non-conforming occupancy uses is a small one, totally out of proportion to the changes made by this proposed ordinance. So I am a no.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
We have, this is a good example, I think, of how the legislative process should work, where good effort is made, there is citizen input, council has review, and we come up with some concerns that Rachel laid out very well. And so, to me, I think what we should do is, since it has already been tabled, and I believe the only option we have is to pass it or perhaps table it indefinitely or vote it down, I think that what we should do is, in light of all the additional research that's gone on, we should take a step back. If there is any legislation where we are afforded the opportunity to take more time to do it right, it's this, because it doesn't go into effect for quite a while. So we have a luxury here of taking a step back and reapproaching it with the concerns that have been raised. So for me, what I would like to see is, because of the extra time we have and the concerns that were brought forth, and that we just passed the new zoning code, and when we passed the new zoning code, we had input from many groups, including the very valuable input from the Planning Commission. What I would like to see happen, again, because we have time, is to send this, to this issue, to the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee of Council and/or the Planning Commission. I think I'd rather send it to Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee first and have them hash through it, and then send it to the Planning Commission for their input, because it is a continuation and a modification of what we spent so much time on. So I'm going to, if it does come to, well, a motion has been made to adopt, and it was seconded, if that motion is voted on, I'm going to vote no, not because I don't agree with the concept, but because I think we are afforded the opportunity to make this better.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I also do not support this legislation. I think it's confusing. It uses unclear and undefined terms. And it's unclear how the number of pre-existing non-conforming uses with respect to occupancy is excessive, because according to our planning director, the number is either unknown or 22. It's also unclear how it's been possible for the number of properties to proliferate since the adoption of the original zoning code in 1975. And while the goal of abating pre-existing uses may be worth pursuing in the near future, I assert that we do not know enough about the breadth and scope of the problem to craft a workable solution. I suggest that our due diligence requires a thorough review of a complete and up-to-date list of non-conforming properties, and that we haven't done that yet. It also appears that such a list is a work in progress. On September 6th, the planning director sent council tips, a non-conforming use list with the caveat that the list is still a work in progress, but that the number of pre-existing non-conforming uses with respect to occupancy is just 22. This list should be brought up to date and reviewed by council to determine the scope of the problem, and then determine what legislative solutions are required to abate the problem. For a measure that could be active for 28 years, a brief pause for a period of months for the city, for city council to do its due diligence is not unreasonable, in my view. So I will vote no.
Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dennis?
I think we probably would all agree that, maybe to varying degrees, this is a problem that needs addressed. I do not think the problem is that we need new laws. I think the problem is that we need to enforce the laws we've, excuse me, the laws we've got. That's a priority of the administration this year. It's a priority of city council. We've just passed the new zoning code. I think we need time to fully implement that. I'd echo everything Greg just said. So I also will be voting no on this ordinance.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, I would like to see a reduction in the name or in the number of non-conforming properties, but I find Rachel's arguments compelling, and I will also be voting no.
Okay. Well, I would say that whether the number is one of these properties or 1,000 of these properties, it is a problem, especially if one of these properties is next door to your house, and because of over-occupancy, there are too many cars to park in the driveway, and they park along the street or in the yard. Just as you say, we can err by voting no on this and then perhaps take it up again sometime in the next 40 years. I say we can pass this tonight, and if there's something wrong with it, we can have these meetings that you can have, and we can vote to change this. It's not like if we pass this tonight that it is the be-all, end-all. So I will be voting yes on this this evening.
Well, Mr. President, this is not without cost, though. If we implement this, if we were to implement this, and we spend our time and energy expanding this list of 20 properties to 40, and then going after those 40 property owners, what else are we foregoing with the staff resources that it would take to do that? So this is a problem, and I absolutely agree that we should address those other problems. I just don't think this is the most effective way to do that.
And that's fine.
And, Mr. President, the sense that I'm getting from the sage words of wisdom that each person has given is that, conceptually, we are in agreement that something should be done, but we just don't think this is, those that have said they'll vote no, don't think this is the vehicle in the current form to do it. And I certainly understand your point about we could look at it regardless, pass it and look at it, or not pass it and look at it. I'm concerned about a ripple or secondary effect that if we do pass it and it does alter some of the other sections, it's just, we've got something that was fairly settled and unsettled, at least for a time, where it then may be changed again. I think it would be a neater process to not pass it and then take some time to look into it something better.
I call the question. Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
No.
Phipps?
No.
Robinette?
No.
Rabando?
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Harold?
No.
All right. The ordinance fails. Is there any other business to come before council this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes.
We gave ordinance 9128 its first reading tonight. We need to set a public hearing on that interim zoning ordinance. Jody, any ideas when we could do that? I don't want to let that 30 days.
Right. Would be November 6th. That would be the?
Be the meeting.
Yep. Because 30 days would be past the second meeting in October, so the first meeting in November is November 6th, if you want to hold it prior to?
So October 16th is a finance committee meeting?
Right. And that's not 30 days from today?
Oh, yes.
November 6th.
Why don't you just tell me when to do it, Jody?
November 6th.
The 6th, okay. All right. So at 6:30 that evening?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That works.
Sorry. That's it for me, Mark.
Any other business? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are adjourned.